Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the January 3rd, 2022 work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda tonight, and following the work session, we will have a closed session. So to kick it off, we're going to get an update on the here is home incentive program from Amanda Pollak. Amanda, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. So this is your monthly update on what projects we've received applications for for the here is home housing incentive program. And in the last month, we've received three applications that total 309 residential units. In total, we've received eight applications that consist of 1,150 residential units. In addition, in the month of December, we had numerous pre-application meetings with developers or property owners. And we're keeping a list of potential projects that we believe will be applying, and I have 21 projects on that list. So I think over the next couple of months, we're going to see a lot more applications coming in. We will be encouraging the developers and property owners to please don't wait till the end of February to apply to get those applications in sooner than later. But already, we have seen over, you know, 1,100 new residential units with interest in coming on the market quickly.
Thank you, Amanda. Obviously, the program's not working, as many have said. But putting that aside, that's my first sarcastic remark of 2022, so bear with me. Council members, any questions or comments?
No.
Keep up the good work, Amanda.
Yeah, it's absolutely fantastic, fantastic news for for our city. Wonderful.
Mr. Boda?
Yeah, that's that's some good news and like hearing that, you know, there's more to come likely within the next month or so. So that's a, you know, it's great to see, you know, you plan for something and it does. At least at this stage, exactly what we wanted to do. So now the next step is following through and making sure these actually get built over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Um, it's fantastic. We're moving right along. Hope to see more progress in 2022. All I can say is I'm looking forward to these, this effort.
Thanks, April. Michelle?
I think this is awesome. I'm so excited, and and I think this is a good sign.
Great. Thank you very much. Look forward to the next one, Amanda. Thank you very much. Next, we have Chantel franchise agreement and Mr. Information Services Director Bill Garrett is going to walk us through that. Bill?
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. So we were contacted by a company called Chantel. They operate primarily out west. They are a 118-year-old company. They're publicly traded. They've got over 1,000 employees. And they've got about $241 million in annual revenues and are profitable. So they're a fairly large company. They're they're just not here on the East Coast. They contacted us in order to look into moving out here, setting up a base of operations in Salisbury in order to offer some some direct competition in the internet television and telephone market space here. So we spoke with them for a while. We negotiated the franchise agreement, which was included with the with the packet here that essentially would be a neighborhood by neighborhood rollout across the city, eventually covering all of the all city areas. Their infrastructure, they would be installing their own infrastructure. We would not have to to fund anything. It's symmetrical fiber, which means the upload and download speed are the same, whereas most most cable internet service is is non-symmetrical, which means your download speed is a lot faster than than your upload speed. This internet service is good for things like telehealth, telelearning for like today when schools are closed, if they go to a virtual learning environment. But it's it's a different kind of more more modern technology than what's currently in the market here. The agreement is not exclusive. It provides us with a 5% gross revenue for their their income for the subscribers. That is the most allowed by federal law. They are going to be bringing some sales tech and marketing jobs here to town. They're going to turn Saltbury into their kind of hub for this region as they scale out into into the county, other counties and other cities, other towns here in the area that they're going to do so out of Salisbury. Looking at approximately 15 new jobs in the area when they kickoff and then scaling it out from there, depending on where else they're able to to expand into. The service packages are a little bit less than some of the competition. They've got about 300 meg internet service for $65 a month or gigabit connection for 80, and that's gigabit up and down. It's not it's bi-directional. The after we signed the agreement timeline, we're looking at about 12 to 18 months for them to go through the engineering and and design phase, and that's when the shovels will hit the ground. And then from there, they they said they tend to move rather quickly. They're doing this partnering in conjunction with Maryland Broadband Cooperative. So they're going to use some of their backhaul in the downtown area and some of the other areas around town in order to explain the whole process. And that's, excuse me, that's where we left off here today.
Thank you, Bill. Questions or comments from the council, Mr. Boda?
Man, this is this is a game changer in this and really excited to see this. So great job, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
I see this as a phenomenal effort. I would love to see this. I'm paying exuberant prices for Comcast. I would love to see see somebody come in and give us something that we can work with and bargain with and not try to clean us out and take every dime we have. So thank you, Bill, for researching this and bringing it forward.
Ms. Blake?
It's just amazing news for our city and I just appreciate not only Bill, but obviously our city employees go above and beyond. Work hard to bring us the best, and I appreciate it. I think this is going to be good news.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
I think this is excellent. Competition is healthy, and that's I'm glad to see them coming in. I think this is awesome. My only question that I had was you said it's going to be about 15 new jobs. Are those going to be local hires or are those going to be brought in from elsewhere? Okay, so they're going to be local hires.
Yes, their 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 plan is to hire locally from the job market here. They're going to look for sales, community engagement, and then tech jobs initially and then scale out as needed.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Cool. Thank you.
Bill, I'm not sure you're the one to answer this, but I just I just had a thought as I was going through this and looking at the franchise agreement. Will this, if any, have any impact on our the way we we help fund PAC 14?
No, it shouldn't have any effect on the way we fund PAC 14. The my understanding after speaking with them is that the any potential customers that they take away from our current our current agreement with Comcast would be about a one-for-one transition, and there's there's stuff in here for PAC Pro through Chantel as well.
Fantastic. Very good. Well, I'm affirmed, but competition's good. It keeps everybody on their toes, and I've never seen it where it doesn't work out well, especially for the consumer. And and God knows we need it. So thank you, Bill, for your effort and your team, and looking forward to the the next 18 months.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, ordinance to approve EV stations at the city park and business development director Laura Soper. I saw her name on here. Laura?
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi, everyone. Delmarva Power approached us about installing some electric vehicle charger stations. They would be at the downtown parking garage, the city park, and Lot 13. And what they're proposing is a total of 11 electric vehicle chargers. So included in tonight's packet is the right-of-way agreements that will allow them to install and maintain them at no cost to the city. If anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer those, as well as Lori Van Hoy from Delmarva Power, and I think Amanda Pollak is also on here.
Great. Another another good positive sign for our city. Mr. Boda, comments or questions?
No, this is a good thing. I think it's going to provide more availability for this throughout the city. So good to see this.
Ms. Jackson?
Only thing I have to say is 2022 has been a lot of growth here, and we're expanding in such a phenomenal way, and I'm glad to see this.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Ms. Blake?
I just think it's another example of why Salisbury is the place to live. Just another example.
This is Gregory.
I think this is great as you're seeing more auto companies moving more towards electric in their scope. So I'm really excited to see these.
Great, thank you. You had mentioned that there were 11 charges, Laura?
Yeah, there will be.
The park?
Three at the parking garage, four at the city park along South Park Drive, and four at Lot 13.
Right, I missed the ones down before at the park. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a brief on Maryland jurisdiction EMS operational program designation. And I think Chief Obart is, I don't see Chief Toll on.
Yeah, Chief, yeah, Chief Toll is not going to be able to make it, I don't think. But glad to be here. This is my first meeting, so forgive me. I'm a tad bit nervous. So we're going to talk about a little bit. I'll let Chris Truitt, Captain Truitt, talk probably more in depth. He was actually been working on this particular program well before I took over where I'm at now, so I've been kind of catching up as well. GMSoft is basically jurisdictional emergency medical services operational program. This is going to allow us to do a lot of things that we have never been able to do before without kind of permission from the county. So I'll go ahead and defer to Chris. He can probably go in detail with what those specific things are.
Yeah, thanks, chief. Like chief was saying, this is kind of separating us from the county. MEMs originally in 1999, I think it was, set about. They just set operational programs throughout the county. And at the time, if you were already kind of doing EMS on your own, they took it over and made you a group. So at the time, we were part of YCOMICOS. So this will allow us to have our own quality assurance and quality improvement plans. So we won't need to run that through County Chiefs Association or what have you. We can apply for some special and optional protocols. Right now, we again, we had to had all 14 state or 13 stations agree to it, as well as some new funding opportunities. Last year and the year before, there was the big talk of the ET3, the emergency treat triage and transport from Medicare Medicaid. And where we would have had to have everyone sign on to it at the time, it was just not feasible. So moving forward, if there are options like that, we can apply for that to show that, you know, we're covering our own calls and, you know, have our own oversight for the most part.
Great. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No, I think this is appropriate, and and at the time is appropriate to take some steps like this.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I especially liked the part about more of funding available. You guys do you guys seriously do a fantastic job on the on the grant section and you know, maybe Chief Obarski, if you could, maybe one of the upcoming work sessions, if you could recap for us what the total funding that was was received through different programs for 2021, and just or you can just send it out to all of us. That would be great.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I see you chomping at the bit there.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to jump in and and thank both Chief Obarski and Captain Truitt for the the important work that they've done on this effort. And I'll make some general comments in one one second, but I just want to I want to note that this is this is not something that has been afforded to every jurisdiction, and this is a rarity. And I think is is further evidence of the new heights that the team at Salisbury Fire Department has taken us to with respect to the types of services and the level of service that we're providing from the emergency medicine standpoint. Obviously, calls for service are rising. We're doing everything we can through mobile integrated health, through the SWIFT program to try to, you know, I don't want to say just reduce calls. That's part of it. But I mean, it's also about providing better healthcare solutions and and solutions beyond healthcare. And I know Captain Truitt can speak in detail to experiences on that front. But I just really want to emphasize how important this is and what an achievement this is. And and then just in general, to to repeat you and acknowledge what you said, Mr. President, that they've they've done it without burdening the taxpayers. In fact, the taxpayers benefit from huge savings achieved from the support of Care First and and the state of Maryland and our partners at Title Health, and the list goes on and on, including federal government through the Safer Grant. So I just want to say thank you for taking the time to hear about this. This is a big development. And in Chris, the only the only thing I'd ask or Captain Truitt, if you have if you can speak to what jurisdictions around the state, if you know off the top of your head, are their own EMS jurisdictions, I think that'd be useful to hear.
Absolutely. So across the state, other than individual counties, pretty much every county has its own operational program. Before this was Anarundel and Annapolis, they're a little split, Baltimore City. And I believe Fort Meade is its own operational program. That was it. So now ourselves and Ocean City will be recognized as individual operational programs as well.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the time.
Okay, next up, we have an ordinance to approve reorganization of multiple city departments. And Deputy City Administrator Andy Kitro will walk us through that. Mr. Kitro, you're on.
All right, hi, council. So in the packet are several documents, including a position authorization revision, a revised organizational chart that highlights what was the Business Development Department that is now being unknown as the Arts and Business and Culture Department, and then a slight reorganization or in expansion of the Human Resources Department. So as you can look through the memo, you see exactly what we're looking to do, but I want to highlight four areas. Basically, how we've come to this point to go before council is is we're having a staff transition and with some different vacancy and some very key positions, a transition in our HR director position, and then Ben Baker, who's a deputy director of field operation, retired on the on the 30th of this this past year. So talking with some of our internal staff and our director of field operations and just some of the things that have been going on in our internal organization, we saw an opportunity to look at a reorganization that touched four different departments. Specifically, the one I want to highlight first is the expansion of the Business Development Department to what we're calling the Arts Business Culture Department, so ABCD. So from the reorganization, if you're looking at that department, instead of having the Business Development Director reporting directly to me, National Folk Festival Local Administrator Carolyn, local manager reporting to to our office, and then the Arts Entertainment District Executive Director Jamie Heder reporting to our office, we would be inserting a new Arts and Business and Culture Director, a new department head, who would actually be overseeing that operations. So you'll see that in the reorganization. We've been looking at doing this reorganization for a couple of years now. We didn't really have the right opportunity, but because of the vacancies and looking at what what we saw as an expansion of our event portfolio and some of the needs we have locally with the National Folk Festival, keeping that for another year. And some of the the things that we're doing in the Salisbury Arts Entertainment District and other events, we thought now would be a great time to look at this reorganization of that new department. Also, specifically, if what we've been looking at downtown, as you're looking at all of the events that we're hosting, we're looking at what we're calling like this tourism oriented oriented district, basically from the Marina to the west, all the way through City Park to the east. So the zoo included. So you're looking at everything we do in the downtown hub, Marina activities potentially on the horizon, all the way through to the to the zoo with the activities we do to the city park, all the way to the zoo, and creating more of this district and really kind of focusing on that corridor as as our tourism hub. And then finally, what I wanted to do, I wanted to definitely highlight a couple of the other pieces within the reorganization. We can go line by line if you'd like to in the memo. But this is a this the ordinance that is being presented is a revenue-neutral ordinance because of the transition of staffing patterns and some other adjustments. This is a revenue-neutral adjustment. So through the actual budget ordinance, there won't be any requests for money from surplus to make this happen.
Great, thank you. Mr. Boda, questions or comments?
But you know, I'd like to highlight something that, you know, you didn't touch on it, but taking that safety manager position and moving it into HR, which is a current trend right now in governmental and municipalities across the spectrum, that's a great spot for it to monitor and investigate incidents and different different safety issues that happen. But coming from that perspective, that's key, because that that's going to cover everything, not just the one department where it resided, because there's a lot more moving pieces in our city. And so kudos on making that that suggestion, which I fully support. And I'm also big on the learning and development and adding this human resources specialist for that. I I think is going to help a lot of the department heads throughout the city on managing that piece of it. And that's and that's a critical component in ensuring that, you know, our safety training and learning is flowing through that and that then that we're we're hitting some some key milestones on and metrics on making sure everybody is well-trained in in a lot of those those aspects. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
Andy, these are these are new positions, right? They're being created.
On on paper, yes, there are new positions. The director position is a new position that's being created using basically the vacated position. We're just we're using that that salary savings and shifting it over out of field operations into this department.
Okay, so will these new positions come from within the organization? Would those people, someone in that actual field, would they fill that position or will we hire from the outside?
The Director of Arts, Business and Culture will be an open application. People within our organization, including Laura, I don't see her on here anymore, is going to be welcome to apply or Jamie or Caroline, anybody can apply, but it will be an open application. And the learning specialist position is actually, we don't have anybody necessarily in the organization that would be in that pipeline, because it is a new position. But any again, anybody within our organization who thinks that they would be a good fit for that, who has a focus on the development and we're in organizational development, we welcome them to to apply for that. The risk manager position is shifting over from field operations. That's Frank Innes. So that position is already filled within body. So there won't be anybody there. The rest of the positions are already existing people.
Okay, now I got one more question. How how will these new positions be funded? How will where is the revenue coming from?
Good question. So the second half of the packet is the budget ordinance. So through the reorganization, what we're looking at is there's salary savings or salary adjustments based off of taking some people who've retired and some other vacancies and adjusting that that revenue and putting them into new accounts. So the budget amendment is actually shifting money into the right orgs so that we can pay people in the in the right the right adjustments. There will be a slight adjustment come FY23, because we are creating a new position. But right now, everything is is neutral, so we're not asking for any surplus.
Thank you.
Ms. Blake?
Just a couple of questions. I'm looking at the revised organizational chart. And under the Deputy City Administrator, how many of these additional positions are going to be new to 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 the Deputy City Administrator? How many of these are new?
Okay, so the W City administering the org chart is myself. The Arts and Business and Culture Director is a new position in the organization chart. The Zoo Director already exists. It's Leonora. She's just being shifted out of field operations into here. The rest of the physicians are already existing business development directors, Laura. So yeah, so it's it's one new position that we're we're taking from field operations and shifting over. Ben Baker's position is leaving field operations and coming over into to this. We've realized that we don't through some some changes in evolution. We're not saying we don't need more help within field operations ultimately, but we realized through some efficiencies and some and some reorganization thoughts with Jana, we don't need necessarily two deputy directors at that level. Because part of this reorganization is also putting utilities back in waterworks and and moving the zoo over here. So moving those two large components, we realize we don't need necessarily Ben's position in that same capacity.
And and for the Human Resources Director, is is there which ones is the risk manager new? Is that the old?
So the risk manager is being moved from field operations over to that department. And then the learning specialist is a new position. Yeah, that's that's somebody that when a new director of HR is brought on board, we're going to be working with that individual to help us recruit and develop that position and then and then promote that hopefully somebody maybe March, we could have on onboard to help us work with our our organization of development and employee development plan.
And I heard you say when it comes, basically, when it comes budget time, this is just shifting around the department codes and consolidating some positions. So it's not like additional funding.
Yeah, and the and the and the actual ordinance that is attached to the document, it's it's shifting $80,000 out of two accounts and putting them to three other accounts. It's revenue neutral. It's just it's it's more of a Keith was here, he'd talk about it, but we have different orgs, because like, for example, Frank Innes's position is Field Operation Organization. He's moving into HR, two different orgs. We got to move that money, that salary over into here so that payroll, timekeeping can can keep it. So it's just it's just cleaning up all the books.
I see. I see it. I'm reading it now. Okay, yeah, that it sounds it sounds a it sounds good.
Thank you, Angela. This is Gregory.
I think you answered all the questions I had, so I'm good. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Well, it seems like only yesterday, but I know it was a while ago that we had the first reorganization. And I think during that discussion, I made the comment, and if I didn't make it, it was in my head. So I will I will make it now. One of the one of the issues that I that I think I expressed was we always tend to lean on our our good people. And if you looked at the charts, I was concerned because there was there was like an imbalance in terms of, in my mind, anyway, as a as a manager. And looking at the revise the revisions that were made, we've we've actually spread it out and gained strength and more focus. So I I think this is an excellent move. And I'm looking forward to see the results of it. How many years ago was it that we did here? That was?
2017.
Four years.
Four years.
Wow. Time flies when you're having fun. But I think, I think this is, this is a very good move and I think it's going to benefit the whole entire organization. And, and coming from, you know, Mayor had mentioned the fact that there was a tendency now for governments to move the Safety Manager under HR. That's been almost a standard in the private sector as long as I've been involved with, with management in the private sector. And the, it brings, it brings the human side into it as well as the statistics. So you're not worried about, you know, you have IRR that means something to certain amount of people. But also, there, there's a human side to it that we have to have, and I think this will address that issue. So I'm, I'm really happy with this and I'm glad it was done. So thank you, Andy, for all your work on it. And looking forward to seeing how it works out. Before we go into the closed session, I'm going to have the remarks because I'm not sure that anybody would want to stay around for that session, just to come out and say that the, we, we've had it and it's over. But, but before I do that, is there anybody that has something that they'd like to, to say in comments? Just identify yourself and Julia will let you in. Okay, nobody doesn't look like anybody. So, Mr. Mayor, comments?
Mr. President, yes, I have a couple of things that I'd like to hit on tonight if I can. So first, I want to point out, we talked about kind of a big change or a big announcement in the EMS services. And, and I, I think that's, that's going to be something that we'll, we'll want to make sure the public understands in the coming days. Another, another major thing that has transpired over the last few days is the reassessment of property values for a third of Wycomico County, including a large portion of the city of Salisbury. And we saw 25% growth in that portion of Salisbury in the assessed value of the properties. Wycomico County was number two in the state with over 20% increase in assessed values. And the city of Salisbury outstripped that and the number one county, which is Charles, I, I think it was, county, DC suburbs. And so, you know, once again, I think the, the lesson for all of us is that for, for many years now, growing our economy, holding taxes low has proven to be the recipe for natural growth. And that's good stuff. I'm also, I want to take us back to Amanda's presentation earlier. Nearly $150 million in proposed residential development in less than a month. I can't wipe the smile off my face because, you know, we, we don't normally see that in a four-year period. We don't, we don't see that much, excuse me, we don't see that much residential development in 10-year period normally. And, and this is just the start. We're going to see a lot more come in in the last two months. I'm confident that this program is out there. So that's all good news. And I think it also speaks to some of the things that Andy touched on with, with respect to the type of environment that we're creating for people to move to, which is a, an environment where, where not only are we open for new people to arrive and welcoming, but also we've got great culture and great events. And, and I think expanding that team, recognizing the value of tourism, the value of the arts and culture and small businesses, what we're all about here. So a lot of things working in tandem. One, a, a great example of which was New Year's Eve. Jamie Heater did a wonderful job. Again, she's, she's a rock star and want to thank her and, and the Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District Incorporated partners. The last two things that I wanted to mention if I can are, one, there is a, a proposal this year for a constitutional amendment in Maryland's constitution to make environmental access to a clean environment a, a fundamental right. And in the past, Maryland Municipal League and Maryland Association of Counties have been concerned about that because of some language in there that put the obligation and onus. The interpretation was that it put the onus for action and any failure to act could lead to potential litigation against the city or the, or a county if we didn't act. That language has been stripped out and the, the really clear message that we all deserve a clean environment is, remains. And so there are many environmental organizations that are going to be reaching out to you. I wanted to let you all know, they want, they want each of the council members to consider signing on to support. There's a letter floating out there. So once, once we've received it, once I've received it, I'll make sure each of you have it and can consider it, can provide it the consideration it deserves. Last thing I want to say is about Moss Hill. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has reached out to us and advised us that they have approved a change in plans for Milford Twilley, the company that owns and operates Moss Hill. So rather than the increase in rent that was going to occur this month, January 2022, for all those who are no longer eligible or were not eligible to begin with, and I think that's worth noting, we're not eligible for a voucher, but we're receiving subsidized rent anyway. They, they will experience the increase to whatever 30% of their income after medical expenses is. But it will now take a year and will be slowly implemented quarterly. And everyone will be allowed to say the eviction notices that went out have been rescinded. And all of them will be allowed to stay. HUD has also advised us that they're going to be hosting, they wanted to host an in-person, but now they're going to be hosting a virtual session for all of the residents that want to participate. And they're going to walk those residents through programs to transition to owner occupied housing. They have several programs that were funded in the infrastructure bill and several programs that have been funded and announced in the last few months. And they are eager to guide and advise the residents, both those with a voucher and those without, on ways to, to take advantage of those programs and become homeowners in Salisbury. So I thought that was a positive resolution to a difficult situation. Want to thank our federal partners for stepping in hard and insisting on the right outcome.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good news. Let's see. Mr. Boda?
Thank you for that update, you know, especially explaining the cost of what's coming as far as development throughout the city for residential development. That's, that's, that's a hefty number. So now just hope everybody gets a chance to go out and make a snowman tonight and be safe when you're driving home or out and about the next day or so.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, I would like to say Happy New Year. We made it to 2022. Just want to let, let the citizens and the residents, our constituents of the city of Salisbury, I want you to know that we are behind you. We are with you. And whatever it is you need from us, we have you. In any way, we've been blessed to be here today. And we're going to do everything we can to keep Salisbury moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Angela?
I'm just extremely pleased to hear about the HUD's response crisis. I think that was probably the most humane intervention. And I know that took a lot of part and a lot of moving parts in the city's part, and I appreciate that. And as always, if you are healthy enough, please, please donate blood. We are still very critical and very low in our area.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle?
Really good news about HUD and, and their, their decisions. Very glad to hear that. And I just want to remind everybody, please go get your booster if you haven't already. Just maybe not first thing tomorrow morning. Be careful driving out there. It's really nasty. I was out there when it first started and it was, it was not good. So please, please be, be careful if you got to go out.
Thank you, Michelle. I'd like to wish Happy New Year to everybody and hope that we start heading back to some form of normality. And again, as my good partner Angela says, if you can give blood, we have less than a day's supply. We have less than a day's supply. So please go out and give blood if you can. And Ashley, it's great to see you back. You look smiling, so that's good.
Nice to be here. Thank you.
Mr. President? One, one last thing that we were remiss to acknowledge. All of the fine folks at Field Operations who are clearing the streets for us and sidewalks, although residents are required to plow or to shovel their sidewalks in front of their properties. Really, you know, they're going to be working late into the night and we're out there yesterday getting ready. You know, they're unsung heroes for keeping us all safe. So just want to give them a thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. And we do sometimes take them for granted. And that's, that's the, that's the worst thing we can do. So thank you for reminding me. At this time, we're going to enter into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, disempowerment, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of employees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B1. And at this time, let me get my paper. I'll entertain a motion to convene in closed session to discuss the appointment for a physician. Okay, Julia, we can get Tom back?
Yeah, they've been here. And Meg, feel free to, to jump off. You're, you're done for the evening. Enjoy.
Thanks.
Thanks, Meg. Tom, are you okay now? Thank you. We have just come out of a closed session and at that closed session, session, we discussed the appointment of a director in the organization. So with that and the fact that we have completed the agenda on the, on the work session, like to wish everybody again a Happy New Year and we'll see you next Monday night. Everybody have a great week. Take care.